I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if you would, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll do roll call.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
J. David Reed.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Ed Ulliberry. Grace Hotson-Pillar here. All City Council members and our Youth Council representative are present.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Bynum, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, in addition to the posted agenda tonight, we have a proclamation for First Responders Month, which we're going to put on the agenda at 4A.
I've asked Mayor Pro Tem Bynum to join me. Whereas first responders, including firefighters, law enforcement officers, 911 dispatchers, emergency medical service professionals, emergency managers, nurses, physicians, and other public safety professionals dedicate their lives to public service and...
Whereas each day, our community's first responders stand ready to aid residents in need, often risking their own safety and well-being in the execution of their duties, and...
Whereas the month of May offers a unique opportunity to acknowledge emergency workers through events such as International Firefighters Day, Public Service Recognition Week, National Police Week, and National Emergency Medical Services Week, and...
Whereas we appreciate the outstanding dedication, courage, and selflessness displayed by public safety and emergency responders in their tireless effort to protect the city of Montrose, and...
Whereas in response to recent emergency events, local first responders have provided exemplary service and critical response efforts to ensure the health and safety of our community. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as First Responders Month. The City of Montrose encourages residents to join us in recognizing the service of all first responders in our community. It witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused to be affixed the official seal of the City of Montrose this third day of May 2022. And I'd like to invite some of our first responders to come up and join me. We're going to take a few minutes and let everybody that wants to leave go ahead and leave. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting, but you are certainly welcome to stay if you'd like to.
Hello, sir.
And I want to thank all our first responders on a personal level for being involved, and thank you for being here. No problem. We're not in that big of a hurry. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. No problem. While we're doing that, we'll go ahead and get started. So now is our call for public comment on non-agenda items. And if there's any member of the public that wishes to address council on a non-agenda item, then I will read the next little section. And seeing none, we'll just move on to Agenda Item Number Six. And that's Approval of Minutes: City Council Consideration of Minutes of the April 18th, 2022 Special City Council Meeting and the April 19th, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the April 18th Special City Council Meeting and the April 19th Regular City Council Meeting as presented.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is Item Number Seven: City Council Consideration of the Appointment of Planning Commissioner Alternate Stephen Ball as a regular member of the City of Montrose Planning Commission and City Clerk Lisa Tulpickel.
Thank you very much, Mayor Frank. As City Council is aware, we have a vacancy on the City of Montrose Planning Commission as a result of the resignation of one of our planning commissioners. We also have an alternate member of our planning commission, Mr. Stephen Ball, who was appointed to the Planning Commission as an alternate last September of 2021. When we've had this circumstance in the past, even as recent as last June, council has voted to appoint the alternate as a regular member of the Planning Commission. If council decides to do that again tonight, we would begin a recruitment process for an alternate. We would advertise during the month of May. We would schedule interviews for the first City Council meeting in June and then schedule appointment for the second City Council meeting in June. If you have any questions on the process, I'm happy to answer them. We also have Mr. Ball here to answer any questions you might have of him.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions for our youth council?
No.
All right, thank you. Then I would accept a motion to appoint Planning Commissioner Alternate Stephen Ball as a regular member of the City Council.
Mr. Mayor, I...
Planning Commissioner, I said that. I was kind of stumbling a little. One of those days. I said Planning Commissioner. I want to always point that out.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Planning Commissioner Alternate Stephen Ball as a regular member of the City of Montrose Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Mr. Ball, would you like to make any comments?
No, thank you, honor.
All right, thank you. Next item is Number Eight: Our New Hotel and Restaurant Liquor License Application. City Council Consideration of a New Hotel and Restaurant Liquor License at 1343 Mayfly Drive for Trattoria di Sofia LLC doing business as Trattoria di Sofia for consumption on the licensed premises. And this is handled by Assistant City Attorney Chris Dowsley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, before City Council is an application to... for a hotel and restaurant liquor license for Trattoria di Sofia located at 1343 Mayfly Drive. This is a public hearing for the hotel and restaurant license. The permit is in order and fees have been paid. From City staff's review of the application, we've seen nothing that would prevent the City Council from transferring or for issuing this license, notwithstanding this hearing. Council can make a decision at the end of this hearing or defer up to 30 days. At this time, I will ask the applicant to step forward and introduce themselves to the City Council and announce their home address for the record.
My name is Rachel Zamora, and my address... We own Trattoria di Sofia, and the address for the restaurant is 1343 Mayfly Drive in Colorado Outdoors.
Could you also announce your address for the record?
Your home address?
My home address? 3174 Crossness Court, Montrose, A1401.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, would you like... would you and the councilors wish to examine the petitioner at this point, or do you wish I asked some of the preliminary questions that are frequently asked?
As following our previous plans, we will allow you to continue.
Thank you. Could you please tell us about Trattoria di Sofia?
Okay, we're a small, family-owned Italian restaurant that started back in 2015, looking to expand, so that's why we joined the Colorado Outdoors program to meet more of our customers' needs in the bar, pizza oven, and outdoor patio.
Thank you. So you've had a beer and wine license before this, correct?
Yes.
All right. Have you had any infractions with that?
No.
Do you know the difference between the beer and wine license and a hotel and restaurant license?
Kind of like, I think like it's having more... More responsibility, of course, I mean, having already the wine and beer's responsibility, but I think full bar to me is more, and I think like to me is having more to... to provide for the customers, you know, more. Some people look for the whiskey, or some people look for tequila, and we use hard beer and wine, so, and we're kind of, I'm learning more about this license. I'm still learning.
Perfect. Since you will have a full bar at this point, do you have any specialty cocktails in mind?
We're working on the menu.
Working on those? Okay, perfect. So are you familiar with the available liquor law education and server training classes for your employees?
Yes.
Have you and all of your current employees taken this training?
Yeah, I took, yeah.
Okay. Generally, when you have a new employee, a new manager, server, how long of a timeframe do you give them to take this class?
Max, we give them about, max, three months.
Perfect. Well, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Mr. Mayor, council, do you have any further questions?
Any further questions from council?
When are you planning to open?
I hope at the end of this month or the beginning of the next month.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, I'll open the hearing. Are there any comments from the public in this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider a new hotel and restaurant license at 1343 Mayfly Drive for Tortella di LLC doing business as Tortella di Sofa for consumption of liquor on premises.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Not to say we're all looking forward very much to the restaurant opening so we can come and enjoy some of your delicious food.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
And now we're going to pause for just a second so Ross can gather back up our translation devices, unless we still need them. Moving on to Item Number Nine: Resolution 2022-09. City Council Consideration of Resolution 2022-09 authorizing assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a Private Activity Bond Allocation of the City of Montrose pursuant to Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act. And this is handled by Citizen Engagement Specialist Ross Veldes.
Good evening, council. Thank you a lot for having me tonight. You'll remember this from work session, but for the past four years, the City of Montrose has assigned our allocation of private activity bonds, or also known as PAB, to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, also known as CHAF, a lot of acronyms. And CHAF in turn puts the PAB to use in our community. We are asking City Council to consider assigning this year's PAB allocation to CHAF. The IRS allocates a per capita bonding authority annually for housing to each state, and that then gets allocated to municipalities. For 2021, the City of Montrose received $1,091,612. In 2022, the allocation for the City of Montrose is $1,125,667,000, or sorry, $67,000. And allocating the PAB directly to CHAF allows our community to benefit from the PAB allocation without the city directly issuing bonds. In 2020, CHAF worked with the City of Montrose to use the city's PAB allocation to support Steel Property LLC's rehabilitation of San Juan apartments. In 2021, CHAF funded 20 loans in their single-family taxes and program first step for a total of $5.3 million in the City of Montrose. If the City Council allocates PAB to CHAF, CHAF will ensure that the funding is issued within the City of Montrose to benefit our community. And as a quick reminder, this PAB allocation, they're not, you know, a blank check that's issued, or not necessarily a blank check, but not cash, that's just kind of given to the City of Montrose that we can use any way we'd like. This is something that would be an administrative burden for the city if we had to kind of dish out PAB-based loans. And in the past four years, CHAF has been good stewards of these resources, and so we're asking you to consider to allocate this PAB to CHAF again this year.
Thank you. So for clarification, this is something that we continually do as kind of a matter of course because we don't want to take on the burden of being a bonding authority, correct?
Exactly.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from staff or from council? Seeing none, would open for public comment? And seeing no public comment, would accept a motion?
I can make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-09 as presented.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Moving on to Item Number Ten: Resolution 2022-10. City Council Consideration of Resolution 2022-10 setting June 7, 2022 as the hearing date for the 6700 Road de Julio Edition Annex. And this is handled by Deputy City Manager Ann Morgan.
Mr. Mayor, like last time, I'd like to repossess myself. Not that I have any financial interests, but they are related to me through marriage, and so I'd rather there be no conflict of interest or any priority or, you know, presentation of that.
Thank you, Mr. Ulliberry. And we'll give Ed time to get out of the room.
Good evening, City Council. While Mr. Ulliberry is leaving the room, I'll just make sure, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
I see thumbs up. Thank you very much. I'll also start sharing my screen.
We're ready whenever you are.
Okay, so, good evening. I am presenting about this annexation application for the 6700 Road de Julio Edition. City Council, you heard about this at work session on April 4, 2022.
Excuse me, Ann?
Yes.
Your screen is mirrored. It's backwards.
Oh my gosh.
IT thinks it's their problem. They're going to fix it.
And also, if you wouldn't mind speaking up a little bit, it's a little hard to hear.
I would have no idea how to fix this. But I think I can talk through this schedule with you. It's in your packet. And all the information I'll be presenting tonight is in the packet, so if we're unable to do the presentation, Greg, I think that would be okay. But I'll just keep it on here in case it works. This is the schedule for the proposed annexation. Like I mentioned, it's in the council packet, which is also available online. And on April 4...
Ann, I'm sorry to interrupt you again. We're still having a lot of trouble hearing you.
Can I stop sharing? Can you hear me okay right now?
That's better.
That's a lot better.
That's better. Thank you.
Okay. Pardon my face really close to my laptop, but I'll talk like this. You heard about this application on April 4 at a work session. On April 19, you reviewed an annexation agreement, and you approved the annexation agreement for this parcel. That step is just a preliminary outline of the details for this annexation. It doesn't mean that you approved the annexation. And so I'm presenting tonight for you to approve a resolution that would set a hearing date for this annexation application. And the hearing date is when you actually consider whether to approve or deny this application. We're proposing that you set the hearing date for June 7, 2022. That date is included in the resolution in your packet for this application. On May 25, prior to your consideration, we'll bring the proposed initial zoning to the Planning Commission. As I mentioned, on June 7, you would have a hearing, and then on June 20, you would have a second reading of an annexation and zoning ordinances and council consideration of an official act of the city plat. There's information in your packet about the general configuration for this annexation. This annexation is located north of Sunnyside Road and south of Miami Road. It's west of 6720 Road and east of the Columbine East subdivision. And really, the important thing about this annexation is it's directly in line with the 6700 Road. And so this is the parcel that through this annexation will allow the city to have the remainder, the missing link of the 6700 Road connected to make one long road for 6700 Road. And the affinity map is in your packet. This site is 9.54 acres. It's within the city's urban growth boundary. It's within the City of Montrose water service area. It's surrounded by other land within the city limits. And the annexation will allow for future residential development that's compatible with adjacent parcels, as well as the dedication of the 6700 Road extension right away. The one variation that you reviewed with the annexation agreement is for a minimum lot depth of 90 feet, and that would be memorialized by the annexation agreement. The proposed initial zoning is R1A Large Estate District, which is consistent with the adjacent parcels. This zoning is intended to provide an area of large, single-family residential lots with a semi-rural environment. This is also consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, which is in your packet, as well as the Growth Area Map from our Comprehensive Plan, which is also in your packet. This property is located within Growth Area 1, which according to the Comprehensive Plan, represents the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow and comprises plotted but unbuilt lots. And that's the case with this one. This lot is surrounded by other city parcels that have been annexed, and so it's an efficient way for the city to grow as opposed to continuing to grow out where we may not have existing services. And the biggest way that this annexation application is consistent with our Comprehensive Plan is that the proposed 6700 Road extension runs through the property. So this is consistent with the transportation plan in our Comprehensive Plan. And with that, thanks for bearing with me with technical issues. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question as we look at the dates and we set that. With Mr. Ulliberry recusing himself, and I know that I will not be here for our meeting on June 7, will we... The remaining three councilors will present a quorum, so that won't be a problem or anything as long as all three of them are here that day.
That's correct. If you'd rather postpone to another day, you could, but three would make a quorum in this case.
Then that, I think if they're all aware that they are on this particular item when we'll be down two councilors, that if they weren't going to attend the meeting, that, you know, if they got sick or something, that would be important to know. Thank you.
Sure. And I will note then, that will be the hearing for the petition and the first reading for the annexation ordinance and the first reading of the zoning ordinance. The second reading on those ordinances will be on June 20. The second reading on those ordinances will be on June 20. And if you're back, you would be able to participate in that hearing, and it's possible to make changes at second reading as well.
Thank you for that additional piece of good information.
All right. Does any of the council have any questions? In that case, I'll open it up for public comment. And seeing none, I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-10 as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? And that is unanimous of the present members of the council. And we'll wait a moment and let Mr. Ullaberry get back indoors. Thank you. Moving on to item number 11, Ordinance 2589 on First Reading. City Council consideration of Ordinance 2589 on First Reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending Title IV, Chapter IV, Section 24 regarding planned development PD regulations to clarify the process, consent, and public notice requirements for applications to amend an existing planned development plan. And this is also by Deputy City Manager Ann Morgan Thaler. Ann, is your voice gonna hold out?
I think so. I will keep this brief, because you've heard this before at work session. Are you able to hear me, Mayor Frank? Thank you.
That'd be great, thank you.
So, this is a proposed amendment to better facilitate amendments to existing planned developments. Our code currently allows for planned developments, otherwise known as PDs, to be amended, but it requires that the, all of the owners within a PD consent to that amendment, even if the PD amendment is limited to just one parcel. So this amendment would clarify that if only a portion of a planned development is being amended, for example, just one lot in a PD, then only the owner of that one lot needs to provide consent for the amendment. So, that is a change. Another change is that we would public notice everyone in the planned development, even if they're beyond the 100-foot notice requirement, in order to make sure they're aware of that change when a public hearing is required. And this is to better facilitate changes. It occurs that some planned developments were approved a long time ago, and the way they were approved and what they allow is no longer consistent with our Comprehensive Plan, with what developers want, or with what's best for our community needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any one have any questions for Ms. Morgan Thaler?
No, this is, nothing has changed since we spent quite a bit of time in work session on this, right?
That is correct. Nothing has changed.
Excellent. If there are no questions, we'll go ahead and hold a hearing. And if there are any comments, and seeing none, I'll close the hearing. And I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass Ordinance 2589 on First Reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion and a second? And that passes unanimously. Moving on to item number 12, the Bear Creek Subdivision filing number 7, Final Plat. City Council consideration of the Bear Creek Subdivision filing number 7, Final Plat, to create 32 new residential lots and dedicated right-of-ways and/or easements. This is Planner 1, William Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I have a brief presentation to share. And I am working on getting that up right now. And I see we still have the mirroring problem, but I'm prepared to move forward regardless. So this is for, this is the final plat application for the Bear Creek Subdivision that's in the northern area of town. The location is shown on this map, it's obviously mirrored there, unfortunately, but the location of this subdivision is just south of Lincoln Road and east of 6300 Road. The total size of this site is approximately 61.13 acres. This can be broken down further. 4.34 acres are residential lots, 2.27 acres of right-of-way, 1.16 acres of open space, and the remaining 53.36 acres consist of an outlot for future development. This plat consists of 32 residential lots. These lots are within the R5 Low Density/Manufactured Housing District, though note that parts of the outlot are also within the R3A Medium High Density Zoning District. The most recent preliminary plat, the Bear Creek Subdivision Amendment Number 4 Preliminary Plat, was approved in September of 2021. The final plat requirements are as follows. All lots must meet the minimum lot size that was set forth in the Planned Development Plan for Bear Creek Subdivision, which these lots all do. All surrounding streets must be in place and approved by City Engineer Scott Murphy prior to final execution. And all easements, city water mains, sewer, and utilities must be installed. And so, this is the plat, this is just the first page, which mostly consists of all the required plat notes and certificates. And then the actual plat is in your packet. I apologize for the mirroring issue, but this is the second page. As you can see in the middle, there are 32 residential lots, dedicated rights-of-way for access, 1.16 acres of open space, and of course, the large outlot. Staff recommends approval of this plat be standard conditional approval that's included in your packet. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Reese?
Yeah, I just have one. On the memo, it says Lot 16, 1 to 2, and then it says one lots total. Are we, is that two? Because when I add it up, it comes to 31 lots, and then when I look at the plat, it's I don't know if the memo, how important the memo is. I know the plat's pretty important, but...
Yeah, I do see that. You're approving the plat. I apologize, there's an error in the memo. But you're not approving the memo itself, the plat is what is being approved officially.
There will not be a legal issue with regards to an error in the memo, so long as the plat is an accurate description of what is going on, that is going to be the legally binding document.
Thank you, Mr. Dowsley. Any other questions? All right, I would accept public comment. Anyone wish to make any comments? And seeing none, I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Bear Creek Subdivision filing number 7, Final Plat, expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately address all of staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
We have a motion and a second? Please vote. And that passes unanimously. And on behalf of council and staff, I'd like to apologize to the public for our technical issues, but if you do want to see a copy of the packet, that you can sign up for that. And if you could explain how, Ms. Del Piccolo, we're having all sorts of issues tonight.
Absolutely. If you go to the city website, www.cityofmontrose.org, do a forward slash and portal, it'll take you to the public portal. You'll find this meeting date, and the packet is available there, as well as the video of this meeting will be also.
Thank you. So if you have any questions about the actual plat, or any other comments on any other issues, you can actually look that up on the packet and find out the accurate information. Thank you. And now we'll move on to staff reports. Any one member of staff have any comments? Yes, Chief Hall.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I would just like to update you on the close of our Latinx Citizens Academy here in the month of April. We taught three different classes and a range of topics that we learned the Latino community wanted to hear about, everything from bullying in school to mental health issues, certainly to sexual assault awareness. And it was absolutely fantastic. We had 21 students in that, in that class, and the really cool thing about it is, they stayed through each, each week. And so, I wanted to recognize Ross Valdez, because he was instrumental in getting that class together, getting the language services together. And this guy here, initially, we were having a little bit of an issue just getting some traction with getting class participants, and he took a couple Sundays and went to some of our local churches and met with these individuals and encouraged them to come. And so, just a special thanks to Ross for all of his hard work, and this has been a very successful program, and we plan on continuing it. So, thank you, Ross, and thank you, City Council. Next, we've got a quick building update. So, the Police Department building is wrapping up finishes, and we are Shaw's installing doors and carpet here this week, and they are also installing planter bollards and things like that around the outside. So it's coming along, and Jim may be able to comment. When you get to finishes, then that's a pretty big deal, closing to, or going towards the finish of the project. And so, we do, that's right. We've got the old All Points Building to knock down, and they're going to start on the secured parking area, too. So, happy to answer any questions, not only about Latinx, sorry, I apologize for not giving council the opportunity to ask questions, but also about the building, so.
I'd like to add my thanks to Mr. Valdez for all the hard work you've been putting in. You've been a valuable asset to the city, and we appreciate you. Thank you very much. And on the building side, it's very exciting. We're looking and seeing they're installing windows, and it looks fantastic, and I'm very excited to see that progress.
Yep. And we've had a few questions. If we're going to open like a community tour, and so, before, can't do it during construction, but between that timeframe where we have furniture install, or maybe just right after furniture install in August, we will definitely host probably two community tours. We'll do an evening community tour, and then we also want to work with the forum and conduct a community tour as part of a forum presentation. So, more to follow on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Any other staff comments? Seeing none. Any update from our youth city council?
Not really much. I think we're, we just did, actually, last week, we did a trash pickup on our road. I don't know what, it's the one that goes by the Star Drive-In, you know, that road. And we got quite a few bags of trash, which stinks, but it was really cool that we could go out and pick all of that up. We're still working on our movie night idea. We found out we had to get a few licenses from, in order to do it at the amphitheater, and so we're going back and trying to get ahold of the Star Drive-In again, to have our high school movie night anti-drug type event. So, yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, any city council comments?
Well, sure, I'm looking at the city's homepage on the website, and I see a really cool event coming up that we haven't mentioned, I don't think, at a council meeting, which is the Montrose Mudder. And that is, I think, a joint program between the city and the Rotary? Bill, maybe you know more about it than anyone, actually. Can I put you on the spot, and you can maybe tell us more?
Yeah, we're really excited. The High School Rotary Interact Club has partnered with the two Rotary Clubs here in town, as well as the city's Office of Business and Tourism, and we've created our first annual Mud Run event for Montrose. It's been talked about for probably eight or nine years, and it's finally come into fruition. We have a lot of people that are enthusiastic outdoor runners and who like to get dirty, like Jim Masheid is our person in-house, who's done Spartan races and those types of things, and so, he's an in-house expert. We've also partnered with our Public Works crews and our Parks Division, workers to build an obstacle course as part of the Mud Run event. So it'll be a 5K event, starting down near the amphitheater, running on the trail along the river, going up and over the hogback. The obstacle course has five or six, you might end up with seven or eight, I think they're adding stuff every day. On the Chapita roadside of Sunset Mesa, you go through the obstacle course, run back up a rope, get up to the top, and run back down the side of Sunset Mesa, and finish down near the amphitheater. And there will be Crazy Like a Fox playing music in the afternoon. It's Sunday, May 15, from around 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And there will be a free concert to the community, to all the participants, they'll also receive goodie bags, there'll be food trucks and beverages for everyone. And so, we're really encouraging some friendly competition among different organizations in the community. We have both a competitive event for singles, who want to compete for cash prizes, and then we have a more fun, kind of my speed, four-person team event after the individual competitive event, which will be just for fun. You go through it, build team with your individual teams from whatever organization, and then your team's name is put into a door prize drawing at the end, so you'll have a chance to win some prizes as well. And then we're actually gonna have a handful of kids under 13 that'll start out the afternoon. They'll be the first ones to go through the event, some 12 and unders to just go through, warm up the obstacle course for the adults coming through. So, it's gonna be really fun. We could use volunteers, of course. Right now, everyone's so busy, so any volunteers from either Rotary Club, the City of Montrose, or any other volunteers from the community who want to be a part of the event, we have lots of stations available for people to get involved, just show up at noon down at Cerise Park by the amphitheater on Sunday, May 15. We'll put you to work.
There is a signup form online for that event?
Yeah, there was a flyer created, which was, created a draft by high school students, and then Kaylee in our Office of Business and Tourism helped them out as well, and we're also getting a lot of support from all the other OBT staff.
Can that be a two-day event for some of us older folks?
Yeah, you could start a day before, if you'd like, yeah. Actually, you could start this Saturday at the amphitheater. We have a partners fundraiser event. The Black Canyon Rotary Club is helping do some, the beer pour for that, and that'll be a great event down at the amphitheater to raise awareness and some fundraising for the partners organization. You could start this Saturday, and we'll see you the following Sunday.
Might take that long. Thank you. Another event I wanted to point out is that this coming Thursday on the Cinco de Mayo, that we have our Governor's Award for Downtown Excellence, because we, through Downtown Colorado Incorporated, the City of Montrose won two awards. One for the Chowdown, they won an award, and also for our Block 64 Improvements, won an award. So we're gonna be having a party down there in Centennial Plaza, and we'll have food trucks down there as well. And we have it, we've heard supposedly there's gonna be at least one taco truck, so... And we have it, we've heard supposedly there's gonna be at least one taco truck, so we can hopefully have some good tacos. Are there any other comments from council? All right. Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. And we are adjourned. Thank you.